Borrowing, maintain required reserves into general fund, assess water and sewer reserve funds to ensure they can satisfy short long term needs. Ninety percent budget execution excluding contingency items, spend what you ask for, and no fund balance appropriations. For your objectives, there were some common themes between all of the commissioners and what you turned in. Those themes were around the sewer lift station, beach nourishment, the Lockwood Valley inlet, stormwater, the pier property, communications, block queue, staff recruitment and retention, and other facilities. Grouping those into priority areas that seem to me from those golden objectives or priority areas for this year, upcoming fiscal year would be high quality infrastructure, community improvements, including accessibility, communications, and growing human capital. So our next steps for this evening are refining our golden objectives and then looking at revenues and major expenditures, an update and an outlook. So moving then to beginning that refining process. I do have a few suggestions that I will make and then if the board would like to take each one of the others and move into more discussion. But off the bat, first of all, I wanted to express my appreciation to this board for listening when there was an ask for less golden objectives this year as compared to last year's list. Last year's list was quite extensive and you've put something here that I don't think that you even have to score as far as the one, two, three, four ranking system. I think all of your goals and objectives listed can be achieved in this upcoming budget year as the finances play out. And I think you're basically all on the same page with a little bit of revision in what the actual wording of the items are. I wanted to point out this is the board's biggest policy document that you ever see each year and your spending plan for the next year based on the staff's inputs. And it's been referenced as the Super Bowl of policy. So you have a right to be very engaged and should be very engaged in the process. I will go on to say as far as this first list here, the first one I would look at us refining the way it's worded. And I'm not going to call out the commissioner that submitted any of these if we're going through them. But I'd ask for some voluntary refinement and discussion between the board. The no new borrowing, I think you guys may potentially end up in a situation with the lift station that you have to do some sort of short term borrowing. We're working around that in every way that we can. But there are things like unknown with federal government shutdowns, things at the federal level that could delay the federal loan. So I think you potentially, we submitted just as an example, the first reimbursement request on February 17th. And that was for just their basic payroll startup. It's been almost a month now and we just heard today that the first phase of the process has been approved. But now we still have to go through their ASAP system. So when you're looking at a month turnaround on invoices with the contractor inquiring over, I would say two to three times in that timeframe, where's the money? That there's a fine line there. And so I think that there could be some refining so that you limit borrowing to emergency needs with the lift station or something to that nature. Additionally, with number five, ninety percent budget execution, I would request that you look at maybe taking the percentage out. I know what this person that submitted this is trying to get to. But sometimes we go on the good side of things and actually come in under budget on projects. And then sometimes the board chooses to want to stop a project and that's large sums of money that may not get spent. So I think if the ninety percent came out there and you've refined that a little bit, that you may get to a better goal for yourself. And then finally, I think you might need to look at revisions for number six under gold on fund balance appropriations. Staff has asked for a very few fund balance appropriations. I can't remember the last one, but the board has had to do a few fund balance appropriations for emergency or contingencies. So I think if you refine that a little bit to put some explanation on maybe reasons that you would do those, that may help you too. So I'll stop there and let the board maybe discuss refining the golden section.
Anybody want to speak?
Sure. For no new borrowing, I guess my thought is it's really, I mean, short term borrowing is one thing. We've got a cash flow issue, but it's really no new debt and maybe even just long term debt at this point. I think the fundamental is we don't want a budget that we have to borrow money to execute in total. So I don't know if debt's the right word or a long term debt, but that's my thought on that. And kind of tied to that is the appropriations where I don't think we should, we should shoot to have a budget that doesn't call for appropriating money out of fund balance. Because to me, that means we've got a budget that we've got to use savings to execute. And I understand that things come up and we may have to dip in and justify it one on one. But from an overall budget perspective, I don't want to go in saying in order to do this budget, we're going to have to use savings. I think those are my two. And I agree the ninety percent, you know, that can get tricky.
Thank you, sir. I didn't even have to beat on my microphone this time. I certainly think the whole issue with the no new borrowing, borrowing, you know, again, these are goals, but I think we particularly now it's appropriate to reword that. I'm the culprit of the ninety percent. And I think if we reword that, based on what I'm really trying to get to is efficient budget execution. Because we collect tax dollars to do budgets and we want to make sure we're not over asking. When I've done budgets before, I'd put in a ten or fifteen percent contingency, which is I don't have a problem with, but thirty and forty would be a lot. So I don't want to do that. So we can just change it to efficient. Christie's absolutely right. Things change. Sometimes we catch a break. Sometimes we hit a snafu and it's going to cost more. So if that change is acceptable, I'd like to just get rid of the ninety percent and just say efficient. Or number six, I had a concern about how that was worded as well. And really, this from my perspective applies to the general fund and not the B part fund. The general fund has a fund balance requirement. B part does not. So I would suggest that we revise it as follows to say, no new fund balance appropriations from the general fund except for unanticipated and emergency expenses. This is what that reserve is for. Fund balances are not really supposed to be used to balance the budget. With regard to B part, I don't see the no fund balance appropriations applying. B part has no fund balance policy or requirement. And if the money's sitting there and we have a fair amount sitting there, well, then we may need to appropriate it to spend it. Now that being said, and please you that know more, let me know if I'm wrong. There are statutes that dictate how the B part tax can be spent. And I understand there's other revenues in there as well. So as we go to look to, if we're going to spend that money, we just have to be mindful that there are requirements on how we spend it. And basically, if we got four million bucks sitting in the pot there, that doesn't mean we can go put all four million dollars on the pier or something. So with that long explanation, I would like to see if anybody agrees with that revision to the statement.
Ms. Thomas, Mr. Smith, you got any comment?
Sure. This is Tracy. I just wanted to say I'm sorry that I couldn't be at the meeting. My son had his baby three weeks early on Tuesday and they were supposed to come home from the hospital today and there was some problems with the number. So we got stuck here in Virginia taking care of the fifteen month old. But I had every intention of being there, so I just wanted to let that be known. As far as the goals, yeah, number two, I would say no, no long term borrowing. I understand that we sometimes have short term issues and that's fine. And as far as number six, I think we're talking about really just during the budget session. We shouldn't have a budget that we would need to balance using appropriations. That might happen during the year when we're, you know, going through and have unexpected expenses. But as far as setting up the budget, what we're doing right now, I don't think that we want to balance the budget as with fund, with appropriations right off the bat. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, you got anything?
No, sir, not at this point. I would have, I would have loved to have been there myself and I hope that I get released tomorrow where I can travel, where I can make the rest of the meetings.
Thanks, sir. Doc, you got anything?
I just agree with what Christie said. I think with the situation with the federal government and the invoice problems, I think we need to keep an open mind when it comes to the sewer lift station because we don't want work to halt them at all. But I think her suggestions of not putting a percentage and keeping in mind we may need something for emergencies like the lift fund, I would go with her suggestions.
Back to you, Madam Town Manager.
So I think what I heard is that you guys are okay with rewording number two as no long term borrowing. And then number five, ninety percent will change to efficient budget execution excluding contingency items. And then I don't know that we got to a consensus on number six. I know Mr. Parfus offered something and then I know that there was some discussion. So I'll let you guys further discuss number six. I wouldn't say no.
Tom, yeah, let me just give some comments. I think if we get into big projects, pier and others, they'd be in the capital improvement plan and we might be in a situation where we say we're going to pay this out of fund balance or something going forward. But I guess I'm differentiating big capital improvement project type items from the other expenses. And I don't know how to word it, but it's like, you know, we should, we should spend the B part money appropriately. And if we've got a big ticket item that's kind of on the capital improvement side, then we would decide whether or not we wanted to dip into savings for that. I don't know how to word it, but that's kind of my thought is it shouldn't be a surprise. It shouldn't be something to pay for kind of routine stuff versus a big ticket.
Anyone else want to take a stab at proper wording that everybody can agree to?
You, based on what you just said as your last statement, do you agree to fund balance appropriations limited the capital project?
That's what I was trying to say.
Anybody have an objection to that?
Nope.
Sounds good to the group.
No, sir.
Okay, moving to the next section, Mayor, if that's okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Four objectives, I'm going to go ahead and try to not have a divisive moment happen behind the dials. So I'm going to, going to say that putting the word terminal groin into the Lockwood Valley inlet could cause the board to have a lengthy discussion on this one that is kind of polarized. I would simply say that if you change it to all of the words and accept, put fund and terminal groin out. So explore long, long term solution for Lockwood Valley dredging and lobbying for Holden Beach to receive sand. That you're looking at multiple long term solutions. And that we can also work at the federal level for the things that we're trying to do with policy that were previously discussed with the board. And everybody can work in unison towards an objective that may not be so polarized as building into a specific.
Not limited to federal, just any source, right?
Any source. And long term solution is broad.
Any more comments?
I agree.
Anybody have an objection to that?
No, sir.
All right. Do you want to read it one more time, make sure everybody's got it?
Yes, I combined the second and the first. So I said explore long term solutions for Lockwood Valley dredging and lobby for Holden Beach to receive sand.
Okay. She'll have the floor.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Specifically, I mean, we want sand every year. Is that right versus every other year?
Specifically, in any long term policy solution that can be navigated at the federal level that I, we talked about with our federal priorities list, but I don't specifically want to reveal our hands in a public workshop because that gives the folks that aren't using advocates an advantage that we maybe try and craft that language.
Do you have the floor, ma'am?
As far as refining, and I mean, again, I think you guys presented a concise document that was along the same lines. So that's all I was going to ask to try to help you continue to be on the same page with your golden objectives. And if there's anything that you stood out to you that you would like to further analyze, I'm good with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, sir.
Oh, you don't wear glasses, right? That's okay. I've been called worse and probably will be. I want to talk a bit about the pier property. I'm okay with basically the statement of proceed with the pier property plan. I'm not ready and I don't think we are ready to talk about alternatives for a new building. And I don't, and I think it's premature to talk about the PPP. We need to figure out what the pier is going to cost us and what exactly we're going to do with that. So it doesn't mean it can't be revisited this year once we get some numbers and know what we're dealing with. But I don't support keeping that in as a goal, particularly on the new pier building. Because depending on what the pier costs, we may not be able to do much of a building. I'm, I would guess that it may be in the six, eight million dollar range and we'll be financially limited.
Well, the purpose of the public private partnership is so it doesn't cost us.
I hear you. I'm not saying we wouldn't look at it, but we need to know what the cost of that pier is before we even entertain it. That number would be important to whoever your partners are. So they can figure out if they can make a buck on it. Because basically, that's what the goal is. They want to make some money. We want to reduce our costs. So.
But we're not even have taken the opportunity to put on an RFP to get ideas of.
Here's what I would suggest, okay? In the pier property plan, appendices D, E, and F spell out a lot of things that both the town and the prospective partner has to, to bring in in a proposal, things that we have to know and do. And then it's got to go to the LGC. And I think we need to flesh all that out before we start entertaining an RFP. So my position is still premature and I think we need to wait till we get some results back.
Yeah, I mean, my position, and I've said before, I'm not against exploring a public private partnership. I just feel that we owe, the town should determine what we want there, what the appropriate building is, and then see if there's partners willing to partner with us to achieve it versus letting them tell us what they want to build there and use our property for. I think we should, we should spend a little bit more time and figure out what it is we really want there that's best for the town and then explore the public private partnership to see who's willing to partner with us to do it.
Ms. Thomas, you got any comments?
Yeah, I would say my objection is really to say that one of our goals is to repair slash open the pier because we can't make that statement until we see what comes back from the engineering analysis. Because it may be that repair is not even one of the options. So I would strike the repair slash open. And again, I think the private public partnership would fall out of the, if we proceed with the pier property plan. I know that it's talked about in there as one of the things to investigate. So I'd like to strike that whole second line.
Mr. Smith, you got any comment?
Yes, sir. Again, we've been put off on this public private partnership four times. But yet they wanted to rush in to tear the building down with absolutely no plan of replacing. If we don't listen to what they, the public private partnership has in mind and can expand on it, change it, do whatever we want to, and see if we can still make that work. I don't see any problem with not discussing that sooner than later. And as far as the pier is concerned, I have in my possession the plan from the previous engineering group. They laid out a pretty good plan on making repairs to the pier. I even went to town hall and I looked at the master plans that him had. And it was a doable project. And, you know, you can, no offense to my fellow commissioners that all have engineering experience, but you can, in my working with engineers in the past, that sometimes two engineers don't agree. So it can, it can be, you know, they say it can, they say it can't. It's one of those that I really think that we need to, instead of spending money to tear a building down without a plan to put it back, is a little premature, just like the private partner, private public partnership was described. We need to have a plan of what we're going to put back before we take it back. That's my, that's my two cents.
All right. I want to say one more thing.
Yes, Doc.
So the thing with the private public partnership, that was just for the building. We didn't say anything about the period, which it could also be explored for that. But it was taken off the agenda in October because it was premature. But yet the next month, we're going to tear the building down. In this, the proposal that I was trying to put an RFP out was for the person, the groups, the financial backing or whatever that would do a private public partnership, would pay to tear the building down, would build a building back and manage a business in it. And I don't see how that's not a win win situation for the town because we're getting ready to spend unbudgeted money to tear the building down with no plan to put anything back. So I don't know. I've been trying to do this for a year and it's premature and it's not a good idea. And I just don't understand why it's not.
Tom, who is this group?
Who is what group?
That put this proposal together.
We haven't been allowed to get a proposal yet.
But it's, it's pretty specific what you presented. I mean, a bar, a restaurant, $200,000 to tear down the building. That was all what was in the plan, in the proposal. I'm just trying to figure out who's driving this. This one.
This, this is ideas of what private public partnerships have been. All I want to do is put an RFP out to see what entities would be interested in putting out a proposal.
So there is no entity right now interested in putting out?
There's been mentioned, that people have mentioned that there's possibilities of groups of financial people or backers that want to put in a proposal to do this. You're not going to find out unless you put, what is it going to cost us to put a RFP out for? There's numerous parks in the state of North Carolina. There's numerous conditions in Wilmington. Avalon Pier just signed a twenty year lease with their private public partnership. The boat that did the dredging for the Lockwood Valley inlet emergency is a private public partnership. What, what are you going to lose by asking for an RFP? I don't understand why we can't even ask to see what proposal we would get back.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
I'll restate my previous statement. I am not against this. I just think we should be telling the potential bidders what we want. And what I'm seeing here is somebody telling us what they want to do with our property. That's my concern.
So if somebody wants to come in and build a $2 million building, not charge the town to tear it down and manage a restaurant in it?
Does that serve the town?
How does it not serve the town?
Well.
But you won't even entertain for it to happen because you don't want it.
Okay, well, I think I'm going to do a point of order here. We can't get into a debate of this or that. I think what we need to be, be mindful of is concentrating on listing what we are going to go after our goal. I mean, that's objectives. And then we, we can agree that we want to talk about subject and that's what needs to go on this list. Am I far off base here, Madam Manager? And then if we all agree that it's important enough to pursue, then we can get into the short strokes. So let's see where we go. Yes, sir, Mr. Parfus.
Alan, can I ask a question, a process question?
Mr. Parfus has the floor. Hold on just a minute.
I think a broad statement of proceeding with the pier property plan still leaves the door open for the PPP and what other facilities may be cited on the parcels. I do believe, having looked at those enclosures to the plan, that it is not nearly as simple as putting an RFP out for the PPP. So I think that needs to be looked at and we need to know what we're getting into. Before, whether it costs anybody something or not, someone's going to have to respond to it. And if you look at what's in the enclosure, it's not insignificant. So I would just leave the broad statement there and then let's start fleshing that stuff out while the engineers are working on something. That's all I'm saying. So I would, I recommend we just say proceed with pier property plan and call it a day.
Ms. Thomas, you have the floor again.
Yeah, I just have a process question. So if we're, can't agree to it, did somebody make a motion to revise these goals? And then there's a vote. I'm just, we're not going to come to consensus on this, obviously. So is that how we would proceed? I'm just trying to understand how we can move forward on this. Did someone make a motion to remove something or to revise something and then, and then it gets voted on?
We're just, we've been doing pretty well with consensus so far today, unless the board members object. I'd like to take it off for what Rick said. It's included in the first bullet. We're not excluding it, but it's part of the first bullet.
Madam Manager, you want to give me some help here, what your, what your preference is?
Well, I, I think that sound of them, the board is divided. So I think the only way you can get to a consensus to try to, well, try to get a consensus that doesn't require a vote is if the board would be willing to go proceed with your property plan and not exclude looking at public private partnerships. I think that's the only way to make everybody at the table happy. If you're not going to be able to get there and there would be no conceding to stop with your property plan, then I think you're going to have to put it to a vote.
Anybody have an objection to that? Mr. Parfus, you had your hand up first.
Yeah, I, number one, I think that's kind of redundant because the pier property plan doesn't exclude anything. But if we can say proceed with the pier property plan, plan and do not exclude looking at a public private partnership, is that, is that what you're proposing, Christie?
Yeah, I was trying to combine the two with something that would, the whole board could pass.
I'm not excluding looking at them at a PPP. We just need to know what the hell we're getting into. It is not simple. And there needs to be some work done to figure out the requirements. And we need to know those things. So if we do ever do a proposal, we need to spell out what our expectations are for deliverables. So Paige, if you could go along with that statement, I could, I'll go there with you. What about you, Tom?
Mr. Myers has the floor.
Yeah, to me, I mean, what I'm hearing for public private partnership, it's really funding. I'm thinking maybe we can add to the list in the first one, including funding strategies or mechanisms or approach, because private partnership, basically, is somebody else funds it for us. So come up with some wording that talks about in the first one, and explore potential funding strategies or something like that for how we're going to pay for it, which could include somebody else paying for it.
Madam Manager?
Did the board agree to proceed with the pier property and the parentheses that the thing for the listing, building on what Mr. Myers just said, add, consider funding partnerships? And then you don't have to put the words public-private, that's any funding partnerships. If we can get money from the state, if we can get money from the federal government, if we can get money from a private entity, then you're covered across the board. Could the board come to a consensus on that?
I can, I can.
Mr. Smith, how about you?
I think that we should, to keep that option open, when the, we were first approached, before this board was, the, the previous board, we were approached with a hypothetical drawing, and of a building that matched the rest of the town building, that the floor plan itself was up, you know, up for discussion, and there was no written in stone what it's gotta be. It can't be a restaurant. I think Christie's told us more than once, it has to be a concession in it. And it's a, it's something that I think that we should, we, we need to investigate. Three versus spending a couple million dollars of the town's money is, uh, it makes sense to me to, to, to at least explore that evidence.
Ms. Thomas, you got anything else?
No, I can live with Christie's final revision of explore potential funding partnerships.
Christie, would you read that again, to see if I can get it?
Yes, I'm assuming, I, I did hear her say, cut it off at pier property plan. So I'm unclear if the board wants to put the IE's example out there, but it either proceed with pier property plan and have all the IE's listed as one of those in the comma, we would add consider potential funding partnerships, or if it ends in plan and you're not listing the IE's, it would be proceed with pier property plan and potential funding partnerships. So that's the board's, whatever you want to convince that to.
Mr. Parfus?
I could support that, and just to pick one, I would include the IE's.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Mr. Myers.
I, I agree. To include that, we really should include the IE's so that it goes in there with them. So I would just add it as another IE, and we're missing a parenthesis there.
Does anybody have an objection? They're agreeing that we got a consensus on that? All right.
I think the consensus should be fine.
All right. You got it. Ms. Management, Madam Manager?
Yes, sir.
All right, next.
Um, for your revenues, we'll start with the general fund, and I'll let the staff answer specifics on the general fund revenues that apply to their department. But I would like to highlight some things that kind of may jump off the page to you, or you may have had questions about, before I turn it over to them for questions. So on your first page of the general fund, that starts at the top with credit card site fee general, if you go midway down the page, you're gonna see interest on savings and investments, and it shows that going from this year's budget of $20,000 to next year's proposed at $100,000, that is a dramatic increase, and that's because of renegotiated rates. So I just wanted to point that out. Is the board following me, or?
No, I lost you. I'm sorry. What, where is it at?
On the general fund revenues, the one that starts with credit card site fee general, and there's a $3,500 number at the top.
Okay.
If you go midway down the page, interest on savings and investments, it ends in the last column, shows $100,000. That's an increase of $20,000 from this year. And I'm just saying that that's because of renegotiated rates.
Okay. So right, we were 145, 291 is the end of '24, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's down from that, but up from whatever.
Well, this, this is that, the end of February that we're, we're still tracking.
Okay.
Um, and then on the second page, which, if you go three-quarters of the way down the page, and that page begins with a line that says credit card site fee water. That's, that's my second page. If you go three-quarters of the way down the page, irrigation meter inspection fees, the first column says the $21,000 number. If you go all the way to next fiscal year, there's zero in there. That is because that number is now gonna be captured in administrative fees line.
Where are you, where are you looking?
On the page that's the water and sewer fund revenue.
Okay, all right. I'm still looking for that in general fund. I missed that.
Yeah, sorry. Water and sewer fund, credit, credit card site fee water is the top one.
Okay.
If you go three-quarters of the way down the page, you have irrigation meter inspection fees, and there's nothing over in the column for next year. That's because that's now gonna be captured in administrative fees.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Um, on that same page, miscellaneous revenue sewer fund, 2425 had 279K budgeted, and we don't show a budgeted number in 2526.
That, that was for the sale.
Okay.
Say, what was that again?
That was for the sale of the.
All right. Thank you.
Are we doing questions on that page?
No, you, you have the floor, Mr. Myers.
Okay, as long as we're on that page, water use charges and sewer use charges are going down? We're using less?
Well, it's staying pretty close to what it tracked in previous years. Can y'all hear me now?
Yeah.
It's tracking pretty close to what it has in, in previous years. We've got to go, uh, I tried to be realistic, try to hit the goals as, as good as I can, as I can, because I don't want to put high numbers in and fall short at the end of the year. So I looked at it, and I looked at it, and it made, we may see even better than we seen here before, but it's still really hard to tell, because as far as looking at numbers you see now, it doesn't have all the building information in, like, right now. We just got more bills to come in, so, and we've also had some, uh, some upgrades for our building software, things like that. We need to make everything, sure everything's making up. Yeah, I didn't, I, I, I looked at it as a conservative approach rather than putting something high, and just because if you look at it year before, let's see, the same line.
Well, I've got, last year's budget was $1,436,803. This year's budget is $1,395,660. So we're budgeting less than we did last year.
I'm, I'm budgeting, no, but I'm seeing coming into the cash reach.
I, I'm just curious, are people using less water, or?
But I will, but I will point out too, if you look at a budget of the overall, and you look at the total number, it comes up to be like $4 million, or $450,000 short than what it was the previous year. $279,000 of it is actually the house sale, which brings us pretty closer to, you know, that's where the big difference is at on that side. And also, I've noticed that our capacity charges for water and sewer seems to be coming down, from what I've seen in previous years, that's just a prediction. And that number is based off the bedroom fee on a house. You know, we can get, give people credit for anything over a five bedroom. We give them credit for up to a five bedrooms, or anything that paid additional, that is, like, the inspection department on bedroom things. But I've noticed they're, they're not coming in what I've injected in.
So that one, that one went down dramatically too, right? Sewer capacity charge?
Yeah.
$130,075. I, I'm just trying to see if it checks with.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, this, this basically says we're using less or building less, or, you know, not growing.
And you also got to look at too, you got a lot of remodels to go on. New plumbing fixtures and stuff are totally different from they used to be. It don't take 7 hours orders budgeting on it anymore. So that, that stuff there plays a toll on them too, and just because there's gonna be 25 new houses built next year, I don't think that, you know, I can assume that's gonna be more water, but I know that might not even be a body now, the whole year. We did come up with some years of COVID there, we signed some record years, and we had more water, sold more than we'd ever sold, but that was because we had people that were relocating here and staying full-time, you know, during the COVID, and that, that, that's kind of stayed back too.
All right. Mr. Smith, you got anything you would add?
No, sir, I don't have a question.
Ms. Thomas?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Anybody in the room here? Madam Manager?
On your next sheet, that's going back where it says general fund revenue, and it starts at the top of the page with sales tax on video progress. Uh, four lines down, is everybody with me?
Yes.
DOT sweeping the fiscal year 2526. You guys did approve that contract, so that number should, there should be a number there instead of a blank space now. And that's gonna be $31,380. $31,480. And then, um, we owe Mr. Evans a correction, because he did submit numbers. Two of those are different than what's showing up on your paper there. If you go three-quarters of the way down that same page, CAMA permits, the number he submitted that then next year's budget is not the 3,300 number, it's 5,247, $5,247.
That, that, that's not right.
It changed.
Never changed. I don't know what happened to the number, but the number is right here. And that number, 25, 28, same page, you've got the correction, which is 287, that's what the sheet was saying.
Okay, there's two CAMA lines on this sheet, so I was going with the one that's down here that said CAMA.
This is, uh, this is what I said.
I know, it's the same one, but you've got a CAMA contract, and then a CAMA line, so I was going by this 5,000 number, because that's the one that's sitting line up there. Okay. And then the one that's administrative fee inspections should not be that 3,100 number. It should be 2,877, based on what was turned in.
So it's the CAMA permit line and the CAMA contract line, the same thing, it's a 287?
No, it's, oh, yes, you want to hand out here. CAMA contract is up here.
So the CAMA permit?
So which one's got the correction?
The one that has the correction that I think matches your budget worksheet.
The CAMA, if they, if they're correcting the CAMA permit one, it's, it's 5,247. If you're correcting the CAMA contract, that's, that's not ours. That's contracts for the town.
Yeah.
That goes to another, somebody else's budget, that's what I mean.
So yours, your, the one I'm talking about is permits that goes to 5,247. That's the value you said, is that? Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that CAMA contract, it wasn't being, wasn't being numbered, it was plugged in for permits or something, it was definitely administrative.
Okay. And then, if, do you guys have more questions on pages on the general fund? I'll let you turn it over to the staff specific to ask questions. Those are the ones I like to highlight before.
Anybody have a question for a staff person? Ms. Thomas?
Yes, sir.
Ms., Mr. Smith, you said no. Ms. Thomas, you got a question of the staff?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, all right.
I do have a question, sorry.
All right, Mr. Myers.
Um, on the ad valorem taxes prior, that's prior year's taxes that are getting paid in the, this year? Is that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and, and okay, that, that's just estimated based on history, or how do we, do we know how mu- I mean, is it some percent of everything that's owed, or just curious how we?
No, it's just that we've all always done, sorry, 2019, last year, it was like an 18.
Okay.
Could come down on that a little bit.
And then the ad valorem, a couple of lines above it is flat as well, right, or down a teeny bit? Ad valorem taxes, is that just because of?
That's just the place, right?
Collection rate?
Yeah, I can't exceed that.
Okay. Okay. So that's, is it 19.2 or 19.08? From which year? From?
From last year.
About 2324? 2324?
Yes.
Bucket, okay. Okay. Is that, I, I had it down, that was 19.08?
Uh, uh.
Okay. The previous year was 19.2 or whatever. Okay. Okay.
All right. Madam Manager, back to you.
Yes, sir. Um, so B part, some revision since your packet, they aren't bad. Um, the Brunswick County refund, CRP, third line down, I'm comfortable with taking that to $32,000 after discussions with the county.
That's Central Reach Project.
Refund.
Refund, that, that, as we're paying it off, they're paying the man.
Reversing us, and what we get back, we have a base rate, but then it's based on the interest that they're getting. So based on what we're hearing from the county, I'm okay with that number going from the 27,000 to 32.
Okay.
And then on, based on the last report that came in for February for paid parking, I'm comfortable with taking the parking revenue, the first line, so it's three lines from the bottom, from 769 to 787980, $787,980. I'm comfortable with taking the all street pocket number to $128,275. 128275.
I, I just had a question on that. That, that's pier parking, is that?
Correct.
And is that just people that pay at the pier, or how about the annual passes that, I mean, you know, if you have an annual pass, you park at the pier, do we pick, how do we pick that up? We?
We actually do it as a rate that is set at 14% over the overall. We've used that rate based on the number of spaces and what we charge, because if we tried to take a look at it and say, okay, the reports that auto give you the NBD each year say that 30% usage at the pier is not realistic in a revenue number, because as they buy their seasonal pass, they may have bought it at the pier, but they may park anywhere on the island. So this is actually broken, it's proceeded based on the number of parking spaces that we have in California.
Okay, and we, we split it because, I mean, it used to be, we had, would use that for separate separate buckets could be used for separate things, but I thought they were combined now. We got approval to put it all together.
You're correct in all of those statements. The reason that it's split out is because the previous board made a statement at one point in time that they wanted all site specifics on the pier to have their own lines, revenues and expenses, so that things could be easily tracked, so that your parking lot is tracked on its own.
It's all one zone, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And those were the highlights of changes I wanted to bring up from the B part revenues projections.
Anybody getting that?
Yes, sir.
I, B part, okay. The interest on investments last year, I mean, it was like 248,000, and now it's 60? Or was it, as of the end of last year, it was 248? Just?
Yeah, I've, I've actually got some, uh, some statements that I gotta get into, that, that number will go up.
That's a return on our $4 million, or whatever we've got. Is that what that is? How we invest it? And then OBW rent, that's the campground and food trucks, or is there anything else on that that's?
No, it's only campground and food trucks.
Only campground and food trucks, okay.
We ready to move on?
Um, and then your canal meeting was included for convenience, so that you did not forget about those being one of your funds as well. But what was the budget for revenue was predicated on is the assessments for each canal subdivision remaining the same as they are this fiscal year. So that is in there, just. So that is in there, just so that you know that currently we're going in with assessment rates at the current fiscal year budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Parra.
I just want to ask kind of a question, it's not really got an answer to it, but. I, I don't know if we've got our dredge spoils issue solved yet, as far as the next time there is a dredge. Where are we gonna put this stuff, do we know that yet?
Uh, Ward and Smith was successful in having, working with Congressman Rousher, as you know, I reported previously, and getting language added. So that we have, we feel more confident that we did, that we will be able to access the board's disposal areas. With advanced permission and completion of the document chain that they have us to do. So I think that we are in a much better place with the policy that was implemented than we were in the past of not knowing where we would go next.
Okay. What this, that question leads up to is. Do you think we need to have right angle look at the, the dredge cost yet to assess any increase in cost in disposal of the spoils?
Um, we can, I can reach out to them if the board is in agreement with you and wanting to, before we're thinking with that, for the expense side of the workshop.
Okay, I'm just curious what the opinion is, whether it's time to do that or if we put it off, and that's it.
Well, yeah, I just, these, I assume we've got revenues and expense per canal fund, but, I mean, if they're not gonna do any dredging, really, there's not that much expense, so it just falls upon balance, is that, this, that how we view this number, is that a real accurate estimate of what they're gonna spend?
So with the special revenue fund, we have to track all revenue and all expenditures.
Yep.
Current, prior, and that's what this, what it is, that's why, like in miscellaneous, there's a pretty large number, and that's from pretty grand and other things.
Yeah.
Priors, that, that's all prior, that's prior.
Yeah, no, I, I understand all the revenue, the expense though, I mean, this basically says each canal's gonna do a million bucks worth of construction, that's.
It's because they remain shovel ready, so if you have to, they want, that's what, it went from trying to knock many, many years ago, door to door, when. Donovan Mitchell and Louis were involved all from the get-go, to try to get people who get enough money to dredge, to them wanting to have master plan in place. And if they need to be shuttle, shovel ready to do a project, they can. And it pays off to do that because Mr. Park has noticed that in his subdivision, Harbor Acres, that they recently had a dredge for a hotspot area that they had in there. And because they had the funds available, we were able to quickly move through a grant process, and that's how these working groups have viewed this and, and keep it shovel ready. So basically, this is the special revenue evergreen fund that just operates harmoniously here with expenses and revenues year after year and.
So, so, so these expenses are there, should they be needed this year, and if they're not, they roll forward?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, and as also reported, there's permitting that goes along in between, so we, you will hear a report Tuesday night that we just got another permit completed, so there are expenses, but even though a dredge is not going on, that didn't have to be. Yeah, I think it was a sermon, yeah.
Yeah, no, yeah, it, it's really the million dollar construction line item that. Sparked me.
Okay, if we're ready to then move to the last part of the packet that was presented. In an effort to transition us to looking at expenses next, prepared for you a document here that has the big ticket items that we have remaining in this fiscal year's budget. And where the department sees that shaking out as being completed, and then what is anticipated from the department is that they've mentioned as big ticket items for next year's budget. So rather than reading to you, if, because I'm fully involved studying your packet, if there's a specific, I'll either let the department head speak to it, and I'll answer it if it falls under my section.
Anybody have any questions?
So, I, so, um, this pump station four, that's air conditioning, is that, that's because those motors were running hot last year, is that, is this a stopgap, or you think it'll solve it, or what's the?
That's, that's, please, please. Thinking, you have to prove that, because if it's simple, means we, we, we have a, means we had over here, a pool of gas, you can shut them on the side of the hill running and trying to cool it down. And the number that I put there. That was a price that somebody had given me in five years, so it was the same to do that, I actually processed, I had to take now, come back to state, go and have some of the pool of equipment. So, uh, I had all got, you know, I had none, future maybe, through, done your passes, and we couldn't afford any, maybe while we're doing the other things, they got, see, be able to see what the actual cost would be. But I definitely need these passes, I'm told if the half have weathered, snow over the state, and people cooling down, and no soil there, so nothing that equipped me to do. And I was jumping around in the field there, because we were down there and we see pumps taking, one of them are so big. I'm not talking about trying to turn that into a pool of water here, because I don't want to kill them, I said, I wonder what it makes you a fairer to do last year. I actually got a pool, then threw those big storms, and just put them in the station, and they have cooled it off, where it had that little square, uh, three and four be in the top. I went to the waters and throw a big round fan, and put the pool before we run that in the hole, to help do that. So what I was actually gonna do is reach out, bring in the area, and see what it would cost for a design, that's what you would call a tool, power, which be is just a spat, you know, the fan, and so they have. We got to keep in mind, that I didn't get rid of any mirrors with it, so you know, if we, we got it in the future, we're reaching, we'll have to set a big hole in the top of that. And we don't want to do anything to harm the integrity of the water after school, in years to come.
Right.
The good thing is, we ever got that hatch, the back film, or if we ever moved any of that out of that, at least we don't have to tell anybody what power, or anything, so tell taste that area is just a lot.
Yeah, I think it was one I was thinking of, because that's the one was kind of nip and tuck for a while last summer, or?
Oh, yeah, I spent the other month over there, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, doing everything I could to keep it cool, and I didn't know, that got me some sense with this one, because I looked for back, these got to play a toll on efficiency, efficiency and tools that I was using. I always been like, I make it to U Y, long as I've got it going, I heard it's been time to check the wire, and I don't know what these call things, you know, these are just snowballs, I've driven out there right now, and they hit them in open, and it's just, and it's. And I'm not trying to, I know the day and on experience, but I've lived through it once, passed it along, and I had to meet with Christie. I'd already been getting emails a month and a half, and one about price increases, for parts and pieces, and we've done them, yeah. We've never had a supply chain like we had before COVID, it just, it was just bad, fast changes, and we were getting, we were just here when we were. So, you know, at the end, like that work, you know, we hear all this stuff about air spending, you know, we don't know where that's getting major, so I'm sure that we're gonna have to submit, pretty long, if you just for our heart to think, but you need to. And I went to the problem, I was going, getting that ninety percent spending on there, because we talked about the. When we have a budget, the first thing that I do is not get about there to start spending, I'm moving, I don't care if it's a couple of years, we can buy our feet. At any minute in time, I can have a, an emergency that causes thousands and thousands of stuff. So I always try to be conservative, I can, in the latter part of the year, just to make sure I baited through, before I start just trying to spend everything out, because more than that. I could spend every night, money in everybody brought down, and people, right there, and it wouldn't be wasted. I heard when we got into the spin side of the year, I didn't want to break it, laugh, or talk, or beat, so pretty, brother, we had one swimming pump, and I think here for a review, it's gonna be seven thousand dollars, for a rebuild. For a review, and we got a budget of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars for that, and that kind of candy, right there, so we ain't got that food, you can do that.
No, it's reusing in case.
Yeah, the reusing case, only seven thousand dollars, and then another rebuild, and I was fun time about twenty, twenty twenty-six, and twenty-nine, and I think, I can only, I was, I hate to say it, it gets violent, bear, shoot through. So we do, it's being side of it, uh, I, I, I'm, 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 it's a long hard, call, or I rate, it's a long, you know, walking around in the hills, but I think this is my, I'm huge, this is, about, that's a, that's a food. I've got a weird, cut out, except over twenty-six thousand, I was from the festival, I feel, I'm not ready to sit on the chair, but I'm just shocked that they're in there, but I'm, and I wait until now, and see if I can make it along, maybe buy half of this year, and half of this year, because what I love to do here. Is when we get on the spin side, if there's any additional funding there, and that we can use to, to release some of that thing in the future, that's what I'm inviting to the, I know, Ron and Candy, they have their stuff, that sewer plant, where they got a prepared replacement fund, and any money they got active, they keep it in that fund. Where you can have stable rents. I've got all of that same right now, if you got any questions, really, I'd, I'd ask, I'll be glad.
Mr. Myers? Well, I'm jumping around a little bit, but I jump back to our goals, number four was assess water and sewer reserve funds to ensure they can satisfy short and long-term needs. So I think that's what you were just talking about, was we need to think about whether or not we need to.
And I apologize, I did not have this mic turned on again.
We can hear you.
But, yeah, I'm absolutely in agreement with that, and, you know, I'd had this conversation with Daniel before. You know, once we do the expense side, and we look at what we got coming in versus going out, it don't really seem like it'd be rocket science to kind of figure out what we need.
One thing on your spares, I think it's important to bring in some examples of lead times to get this stuff, because you don't run down to Granger's and pick up a circuit card, or sewage pump, or any of this stuff, I mean, pump will have six months lead time, I'll bet you.
It took six to eight months to get that rebuilt. Fortunately, I have a spare sitting in the floor to drop in there while that one was, was going.
Well, all that stuff is like really critical infrastructure.
Oh, yeah, and you know, in the beginning, when we first started talking about these pumps taking designs and stuff, everybody had this big mentality there, oh man, we're just gonna have a whole building full of spare parts. Well, that's about like doing everything, car dealer shit, or buying another brand new Ford pickup truck, and thinking the part is gonna fit on a nineteen-seventy-four D F one hundred, you just don't, you don't have.
Good point, good point. Madam Clerk? Where are we?
They're telling us, though, if there's questions on this list.
So you want some more questions, anybody got more questions?
None here, sir.
Mr. Smith, Ms. Thomas?
No, sir.
Ms. Thomas?
No, I'm good, I'm good.
Back to you.
Wait, I, one more question, I guess, for police.
Mr. Myers?
What's the story on these Humvees, we traded one in for something else, or did we paint them?
We, it's been a slow process, because I've been trying to be very frugal, because you, you know, the, the funding that was authorized last year was to upfit both, right?
Yep.
Um, what we, what we're learning because of some good usage during the no-name, the no-name storm. Um, I spent, I spent a good amount of time in Bowling Springs swimming with one of the Humvees, and I mean that literally, they, they were underwater, as, as you know, um, and it performed very well. Um, very practical, learned a lot for, um, use over here, but there were some other high clearance vehicles that are also available through the same program, for, you know, the vehicle itself's free to us. Of course, and you still have kind of the same, um, expended expenses after the fact, if we move forward on that, and, and our reference, um. For where the statement for passenger high clearance vehicle, it's basically the, I think they're McPherson's, the Oshkosh, they kind of look like a, a airport fire truck on the front end. But it's the new two and a half or five ton that the military's using, um, their automatic transmissions instead of the old two and a halves. Um, looking at trying to source one of those, um, because you can put ten to fifteen people in to back up.
Right.
Um, and, and, you know, trying to find, trying to find, again, this particular Humvee that we have with this fiberglass top, took me three and a half years to find, find them, and then I found three. And we, of course, jumped on two of them, because we wanted the ability to have, you know, use them during storms, you don't want to open rear, because you don't want me to come get you, and you sit back there with hurricane force winds, right? So, um, the short story is, we're looking at trading, giving one of these back or returning it, we have not had any expenditure on one of the Humvees. We kind of redirected and did one first. You know, so we weren't spending all the money and, and jumping on both of them, and turns out, we learned, we learned probably the right way to go. And trying to find one of the other ones, um, and the best example is Lockwood Valley Bridge was underwater on two eleven, right at Stone Chimney that night. When, when I was trying to get home from Bowling Springs about eleven P M. that night, I missed the information that I couldn't come home that way. So I went, I had to go from Bowling Springs to Southport, came all the way up two eleven, only to find out I couldn't go through. Cross the bridge there, because I watched a D O T. truck that weighed fifteen thousand pounds float. Had we had the other truck, the, the two and a half ton I'm talking about, I watched several of those drive right through them. The, the county water department actually has one, um, that was vital to them keeping their infrastructure running, because I ran into them on Oak Island, yeah, I had to go over Oak Island bridges, you couldn't go down two eleven. But they, um, they had an electrical problem, so we stopped, you know, kind of fixed that in route, but, um.
Okay, so we got one painted now, is that it?
You got one painted, um, yes, sir, the, the lettering is ready, I'm trying to plan one trip to the upfitter, who also does our vinyl. Um, because I have to deliver the equipment for the two new trucks for this current budget.
Okay.
Some of the, the radios and some of that stuff, I have to take up to them, so I'm trying to make it all in one trip.
Okay.
Because those trucks have just gotten to him within the last thirty days from Ford, and they were ordered at the beginning of the fiscal.
And on the detective, still looking, still need one?
Yes, sir, following Chief's, um, hi- his guidance is trying to get, you know, the, the patrol officers filled first, and then, and then, um, look towards the detective's position, is my understanding, um.
And to add to that, I've spoken to the chief, he could not be here tonight because he's in training, but he has internal candidates that would be good for this detective position. But because they have been so down in patrol positions, not just one, but multiple, he does not feel that he can do that interview process and promote from within, with the limited amount of promotion from within that they have. Until he gets his patrol officers filled.
And as, I think last year, he presented an, a summary of the impact of not having a detective, is that same thing, how many cases didn't get investigated?
Yes, uh, the, the.
I mean, we're not there yet, I just was wondering if that was coming.
The, the answers would be the same as they were a year ago, yes, sir.
Back to you, madam.
That is all I have, and the board has something else.
Any commissioner have anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn for a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me attend this evening.
Aye.
Return, but we're still listening.